The San Lorenzo Valley Emergency Network is a nonprofit organization here in the valley. And our mission is to educate the public on the matters of emergency preparedness and natural disasters. And we are really pleased tonight to bring you essentially a play in three acts, starting with and highlighting with the topic of fire hazards severity zones. That will be the first subject. We'll spend about a half hour on this, then we will transition to touch on insurance specifically with a guest from the California Department of Insurance. And then we will find out a little bit about real estate in our area and impacts. And we will also speak to Firewise, a program that if you have not heard about it, you really do want to hear about it. I know that in the audience here today, we have a number of representatives of Firewise communities in San Lorenzo Valley. And thank you so much for being here. I also would like to recognize my board members from the San Lorenzo Valley Emergency Network, who have been working very hard to pull this meeting together, get the word out, run our AV and support this meeting. Also, I would like to recognize and thank the Highlands Park Senior and Community Center. They are a fantastic group of folks who are serving our community, not only for seniors, but really creating a space like this where our community can meet and talk about important subjects. So with that, I would like to recognize that also, well, let me start with our speakers and I'll recognize some additional people who are in the room. To my right, your left is Deputy Chief Scott Witt from the Office of the State Fire Marshal, CAL FIRE, came all the way from Sacramento to be with us this evening in person. Chief Witt has led the effort to revise the Hazard Severity Zone maps that we're going to talk about. He's extremely knowledgeable about the process of those maps, the data that went into them, the what's the next steps for us to understand what will happen. Immediately to my right is Frank Rogers, Fire Captain with CAL FIRE CZU here in Felton. And Frank, Captain Rogers, I should say, served as the local point of contact for two prior public comment periods on the 2023 map. Captain Rogers has knowledge about the data from this area that was input to this map. Online, we have a speaker with us from the California Department of Insurance. Now, the California Department of Insurance, as you may know, is the regulates the insurance industry for the state of California. We have with us Richie Sayavong, an outreach analyst with California Department of Insurance to, he is a liaison both to elected officials and to communities like events like this one. And he serves the Central California Coast region. And he'll be talking to us about the CDI Safer From Wildfire program. And that's why I gave Richie a little yellow card here at the table because he's on Zoom instead of in person. But we're really glad that he's with us. All right. And then to my left is Logan Andren with Andrenhomes.com. Logan is in Boulder Creek, and he's a real estate broker, associate and property manager. And he's here to help us give some insight as to what's happening with our real estate and give a perspective there. And then Lindsay Speth has joined us. And Lindsay is a member of a Firewise community off of Alba Road in Ben Lomond. And she has volunteered to come this evening and share her knowledge about the Firewise program and adoption in SLV. So these are our speakers and I thank you so much for coming. I would also like to recognize that in our audience here this evening, we do have some of our local representatives. We have Gail Palarin, California Assemblywoman, who is with us. Thanks, Gail. We have Bruce McPherson, Fifth District Supervisor, is with us to hear from us tonight. Thank you so much. Let's see. Senator Laird, thank you. Yeah, John Laird, who is our California Senator. So he's sent a representative who is with us this evening. Thank you so much for being here. Okay. And we also have Monica Martinez is in the room. Monica happens to be a candidate for running for Supervisor, Fifth District. So welcome.
Yeah, there's another candidate here too.
Christopher Bradford, also running for Fifth District. Thanks for being here. So let's get started. Topic one, Fire Hazard Severity Zones. So I'm going to turn to Chief Witt and Captain Frank Rogers. So yeah, so Frank, I understand you've got a presentation that you can speak to to catch us up.
So I did give a PowerPoint. So I can walk over and grab that. A little bit of background. Hopefully, or perhaps not, you have at least a vague familiarity with fire hazard severity zones, at least in the fact that you're here to get some information about them. They come out of wildland fire. And if you're not part of the fire service, responsibility while in fire can be just kind of an esoteric subject. For us, it's kind of our bread and butter. When I talk about responsibility, it has to do with responsibility for suppressing the wildland fire and responsibility for paying for the suppression of the fire. In that regard, we have three different possible responsibilities in our state. If the land is owned by the federal government, that is federal responsibility area, FRA. If the land is inside a local government agency, a city, for example, that land is now local responsibility area, which is LRA. Everything else in the state is the state's responsibility. So that is our state responsibility area, our SRA. When we talk about fire hazard severity zones, we are speaking specifically to the SRA. The process with the fire hazard severity zones is that they need to be updated every once in a while. Generally speaking, the conditions that create the hazard in the area don't change all that much. But sometimes they change enough that we need to have an update. So so the updates that have been happening started back in December of 2022. And the state decided that with our updates, we're going to redo the whole thing. So what happened is one of our state agency, our FRAP, which is Fire Resource Assessment Program, took all the data from other fire currents and both the probability and things that actually happened on the ground. They ran them through an algorithm to come up with the fire hazard severity zones. And they said, okay, this is what it is. And then they sent that information out to the local units, had us take a look at it. And pick at it to see if there was anything that was like egregiously incorrect in our opinion. We sent back that information. They came out with the next draft. I said, okay, I think this is it. And we said, great. At that point, we went through a public cut section, which happened between, well, the end of December and February of 2023. Here we go. And in that time, the maps were available on the website as well as having in-person public comment meetings throughout the entire state. So every county in the state had an option for the public to come in, make a comment on the maps. And then that for public comment ended on February 3rd. With the public comment, we got a lot of responses. They went back and they updated the map based on the public comment. In fact, they updated enough that they decided to have a second public comment period. And that second public comment period ended April 4th. Once again, they got a lot of response on the maps. So they opened a third public comment period that ended August 9th of 2023. Those comments are currently, it is likely that this third comment period will be the last comment period. And after all the reviews have been made, after all the comments have been reviewed and any adjustments have been made, at that point, the maps will go to legislation, I believe, or is it CAL FIRE? Okay, Office of Administrative Law will then be given the maps and told this is what we want our new maps to be. And that's when they will be approved and adopted as the maps. So far, we've had over 1,300 comments received about the maps.
May I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So what you said is that the the map that's being revised is from 2007. All right. So like this is the major revision to this map.
Yes. So the current and active hazard severity zones are the maps that were created in 2007.
Okay.
Everything after that is currently in draft form until it is approved by Office of Administrative Law.
And I only got word of this map even existing. Maybe it was just before the close of the most recent public comment period. But there was a prior community or accounting meeting to discuss the fire zone maps. And you know approximately when that was?
That was the third week of January for both Santa Cruz and San Mateo County, which is what our local CZU unit compromises.
Okay, okay. That was a bit of a, we're in the middle of kind of a rainy winter then.
We were in the middle of a rainy winter, but the meetings had been scheduled months prior. And it was very difficult to change the dates to be publicized in advance. Fifteen years of weather?
So the question, the question asked was what happened between 2007 and 2023 to make a change in the map? Thanks. We're going to take more of our questions at the end of our session, but thank you so much.
All right, good. We're on the right slide. Specifically, what are fire hazard severity zones? The zones themselves are required by law. Back in about the Warwick and CDF, that we needed to come up with maps that showed where a fire hazard was in California, in our responsibility area. And by 1985, the first version of fire hazard severity zones were created and distributed statewide. In the creation of the zones, what they wanted was something relatively simple. They came up with three possible zones inside all of the zones. And moderate fire danger, high fire danger, very high fire danger hazard, excuse me. And with that, everything in California in the state responsibility is given one of those three designations. So there's not a whole lot of difference necessarily between those as far as the regulations that apply within state responsibility area. When we start talking about local responsible area, I'll get to that in a second. There are some definite differences in which laws and regulations apply to which zones. So with that, how did we create the zones? We looked at fire probability. We looked at fire weather and fire behavior. With the combination of those things, that was how we decided what is very high fire danger, what is high, what is moderate. The fire service has been modeling fire behavior for a very long time, mathematically modeling fire behavior, starting back in the 1950s. And that allows us to determine things like with a certain vegetation type, what is the rate of spread that that fire is going to grow at under certain conditions? We have models, we have math, and we have enrolled real, real world experience watching fires grow at certain rates and comparing them against our models and then changing things up. So we have a fairly good idea of what the fire is going to do when it starts under given vegetation types, under given weather conditions, things like that. So with only three different zones to choose from, moderate, high, very high, they chose breakpoints on rates of spread, things like that, to determine what makes it moderate versus high versus very high. Part of their calculation is the real world vegetation on the ground. So somebody asked, what's changed? Vegetation doesn't change a whole lot. Generally speaking, things that were grass grow back as grass. Brushfields grow back as brushfields, forest grows back as forest and timber. But over time, you do get some change. So if the vegetation has changed and it appears to be stable over a 30 to 50 year period, that might cause a change in the map. The other thing that changes a lot faster is the weather. So the other difference between 15 years ago and now, we have weather stations that have been collecting very good data for a long time. We have more weather stations on the ground now than we had then. We have mobile weather stations that we take to fire incidents to get accurate models on fire. So the weather data for the last 15 years is different than the weather 15 years before that. And so what they looked at is they looked at long-term climatic trends to determine what a weather is going to be worst case weather scenario as far as fire is concerned, to determine what a fire hazard zone is going to be. One of the biggest changes between the 2007 maps and this map is what we've learned on actual incidents on how structures catch on fire. And that is the amber cast. So in previous models, the amber cast was either not used or not accentuated in the mathematical model. In the newer models, what we're looking at is based on our real world experience where we're watching structures burn down due to embers being blown and things like that. That ember cast is being put into the model to determine whether or not that zone will be moderate, high or very high. So that is a change from the 2007 model. Alrighty. Last thing to say about the zones, and this is a big one, hazard, not risk. When I first started working with the fire hazard severity zones, I had a little bit of trouble wrapping my brain around the difference between the word hazard and risk. So we need to give you some definitions. Hazard, as we use the term, is the base threat to the vegetation and the infrastructure that does not change over a 30 to 50 year period. So like I said, grass grows back to grass, brush grows back to brush, you cut it, it grows back. The hazard is that base level of threat that exists regardless of what you do. Risk, as we define it, is different. Risk is modifiable. You can alter your risk by during your brush. You can alter your risk by laying down non-combustible material within five feet of the striker. You can alter your risk by covering your vents with tight metal mesh. So hazard is not risk. And risk is very individual because it can be modified by each structure, each person, each property. All right. Let's see if we go to the next slide. So why do we, or what do we use the maps for? The biggest thing in the SRA and in some of the LRA are California building codes. So Chapter 7 is a California building code that applies to all structures that are built in the SRA. And those codes have been written with the idea that we need to make our structures more fire safe over the years. So if you are in state responsibility area, doesn't matter if you're in moderate, high or very high, any new structure must comply with chapter 7A. If you're in a local responsibility area up till all about now, and you were in a very high fire danger aided area, you also had to comply with chapter 7A. I believe that's changing, but that's also the next slide. So we'll get to that in a second. The other things the maps are for. If you buy or sell a property, a real property, you are required to disclose hazards to the property. And the fire hazard of the property is one of those things you must disclose. So with the different zones, you can disclose you are in a very high fire hazard severity zone or high or moderate depending where your property is. The other thing that the maps get used for is development standards, road width, water supply, signage on the roads, things like that. Those are often driven. The regulations on those are driven by the fire hazard severity zones. And on this slide, finally, anytime a city or county starts looking at their general plan, specifically the the safety element of the general plan, they end up referring back to fire hazard severity zones when they're altering their safety element. Last thing, defensible space clearance. If you're in the state responsibility area, you are required by Public Resource Code 4291 to have defensible space around your structure. It doesn't matter your zone. Everybody in the SRA gets the same requirement, which means everybody in the SRA has the potential to get an inspection for defensible space. We've got Chief Bingham here, which reminds me the difference between state responsibility area and fire districts. You can have both. Your fire district is responsible for your fire protection, which is your structure fires, your vehicle fires, your vehicle accidents, your medical aids, your hazardous materials responses, things like that. They also respond to your wildland fires. They are the first guys on scene. But responsibility wise, if you are in the SRA, even if you're in a fire district, it is the state's responsibility to suppress wildland fires, which is a financial responsibility as well as responsibility to show up. So everybody in the San Lorenzo Valley, whether you're in Boulder Creek Fire District, Ben Lomond Fire District, Elmen Fire District, Zani, any of those, you are still within the state responsibility area for wildland fires, which means you still are in a fire hazard severity zone. All right. On the next slide.
Just while you're transitioning here, just to put a fine point on it. With the map that you've developed, we keep talking about SRA and LRA. And when I look at the map, when I see some gray areas like City of Scotts Valley or Santa Cruz and they're gray, those are LRA, Local Responsibility Area, is that?
That is correct. So anything inside a incorporated city is by definition local responsibility area. The maps will have gray in those areas until the local responsibility area has that updated. When the state of California was producing these maps, it was a lot easier to do the mathematical coverage over the entire state rather than try to cut out the local responsibility areas. So we, as an agency, kind of know what the fire hazard is going to be there. But until we get the SRA fire hazard severity zones approved, we're not going to move on to the local responsibility hazards yet. So the assumption is, as soon as we're done with our SRA fire hazard severity zones, then we give all that data to the local responsibilities and they go through the same process that we're going through with the state, except their public comment period would be simply those local responsible areas, those incorporated cities. On this map, on this slide, what we've got are the three columns with the different responsibility areas. On the left, we've got our local responsible areas, in the middle of the state responsibility areas, and on the right, the federal responsibility areas, and why it's important kind of listed out. For the state responsibility areas, all that little writing is pretty much the same for all of the fire hazard severity zones, except for the defensible space real estate compliance. So let me read out all of these things for all of you. So in the zones, we must have a fire hazard severity zone map for SRA. California Building Code, Chapter 7A applies. The state fire safe regulations apply. Defensible space, which is Public Resource Code 4291, applies. Real estate hazard disclosures apply. Defensible space real estate compliance applies and subdivision review applies. Subdivision review is if you own land and you're looking to basically create a neighborhood, there are certain neighborhood is created within the SRA that are, that's part of state code. Yep.
No changes to what you as the homeowner, you as local government and fire district, county building department. Green is essentially means no dangers in zones or requirements for the maps. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. In the high fire zone, it's exactly the same as very high. The difference between all of the things that are important is the defensible space real estate compliance. And this is what we call the AB 38. So I believe it's the Senate Bill AB 38. This was a rule that is now in effect. If you're selling a property and the property is in the SRA, you must have defensible space around your property. You must have an inspection of the defensible space before the property is sold. And in order to do that, since properties are bought and sold every day, there is a website you can go to to sign up for an AB 38 inspection, a defensible space inspection. Within the unit, we have defensible space inspectors, we have fire prevention officers. Once your name goes on the list from the website, they will send somebody out, do the inspection and let you know whether you passed or failed based on your 4291 requirements. All right. For the local responsibility area, which is that column on the left, that is the same in the very high fire hazard severity zone, both in the local responsible area and the state responsibility area. So all the things I listed out in the very beginning, exactly the same, whether you live in the City of Scotts Valley or whether you live in Zani next door. Things that are changing, in the LRA, the fire hazard severity zone maps are going to be applied in the LRA on the next go around. In years past, that they detail what the very high fire hazard severity was. Moving forward, the local responsibility will now show you not only where the very high fire hazard severity is, they will also show you where the high fire hazard severity and the moderate fire hazard severity. So that is a change and it's coming. The other change that's coming in the past, in the local responsibility area, they had to follow California Building Code, Chapter 7A. If you were in the very high zones, you did not necessarily, were not necessarily required to follow those if you were in a higher moderate, mostly because they didn't map out the high and moderate areas. And that is changing. And then the other thing that will be changing is the defensible space real estate compliance. So if you are in a very high or high fire hazard severity zones moving forward, whether it's in the state responsibility or the local responsibility, when you sell the property, it will need that AB 38 sensible space inspection on file. And then last one in the moderate zone in the LRA, like I said, they're going to map that as well as the high and the very high. And there will be Chapter 7A coming soon. Senate Bill 63, is that approved yet? Yes. Okay. Coming soon to a local responsible area near you. All right. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide, which I believe is the last. I've done a lot of talking and I have trouble following time. Virtually everything I've said is on the Office of the State Fire Marshal website, sfm.fire.ca.gov. S F M dot fire dot C A dot gov slash F H S Z. Um, we have multiple videos that explain pretty much everything I explained, but a little more professionally. Uh, there are multiple links and there are a lot of frequently asked questions. That can answer questions you have and it's written down. So you don't have to remember what I said. Highly encourage anybody that has any sort of question about fire hazard severity zones. Go there, scroll around, click on everything, uh, and information is available to you. All right.
Thanks very much. So I want to point out two things real quick, which is that at the back of the room, um. Uh, Sliven has prepared a handout with a number of web links uh, that's covering all our topics. So including a link. That um. Fire Captain Rogers just mentioned to you is on that list. Also, all of those links are listed live on the um, Sliven website. If you go to S L V E N dot O R G and just scroll down, we've got all the links there as well. So we do hope that you'll use those to get you some more information. Um, tonight we also happen to have, there is a um, a Q R code that gets you to the um. Uh, the map which can show you, um, you can put in your address and find out where you are on this map. We've got kind of a, you know, a reproduction of part of the map at the back of the room. And the the Q R code is also sitting on the back table. I'd like to ask a few questions. May I? Um, so. Oh, wow. Such an amazing amount of information here, but one of the things that I noticed like compared to two thousand and seven map, what what really struck out. In particular was uh, with the in the uh, mountains area, that Boulder Creek Brookdale area, we can kind of see it at the reproduction of our map there at the back of the room. That um. Uh, we've got some zones here that are in the very high hazard. Zone before and they weren't, they weren't before. So as a property owner, if I'm in like, I'm in that zone, what is my takeaway? From this map? How do I need to look at this information and understand? Um, what it means to me and my property?
Big takeaway with these zones. Nothing's changed for the property owner in the sense that. You still live in an area that can be prone to fire. So your defensible space is the single most important thing you can do to protect your property. Um, thirty feet around the house, lean, clean and green. Uh, if it's dead, mow it down to less than ankle high. If you want to keep live vegetation, keep it well watered. Use non combustible materials within five feet of the home. And everything from thirty to a hundred feet away from your structure that's on your property. Clear that out. So you don't have continuous fuels. Which are what fire service talks about when we talk about vegetation. It's just all fuel to us. So horizontal spacing, vertical spacing between anything you want to keep. Um, trees are great. Keep them, but limb them up so that you don't have branches hanging down within eight feet of the ground. Uh, so if we can have that space between the fuels that are on the surface of the ground and the fuel that are up in the trees. Hopefully, uh, we can keep the fire on the ground and extinguish it quickly. And your structure will be safe from the work you did in addition to the fire services that is showing up.
Thank you. I have an, I have another question. It's gonna get a little bit harder. Um, one of the interesting. Features of the of the map that I see is that there uh, it's an interesting shape. And I'm curious about why is, you know. In some cases, it almost looks like fingers. So what is it about the data that's behind the map that lends to this result? And and how are we supposed to understand?
So some of it's not an understanding, some of it's simply an accepting. Um, the. The math that went into the modeling is is not something that I would be able to explain. Um. I I do have a math background, but I. Don't know what the math is. Uh, I have to trust that the people in the fire and resource assessment program who have computers. That actually create the models. Um, will do. That said. Generally speaking, changes between zones. Are typically changes in vegetation. Changes in slope. Changes in aspect, aspect being which direction your hillside is facing north, south, east, west. Um, other changes can include things like uh, how often we have a natural fire return interval. Uh, so you know, historically, how often is lightning coming through and lighting fires in that area? Or even better, look at our fire data from the last twenty years on how often you have ignitions in your neighborhood. So that gives you a a probability of whether or not there is going to be a fire in your area. So we a lot of data going back a lot of years. And the best I can do on understanding it is kind of trust that we looked at it, we took it into account. And the math made sense.
And I can, I can jump on that grenade a little bit. Um, so again, my name's Scott. I'm out of the Fire Marshal's Office out of Sacramento, longtime Cal Fire employee. Um, and one of my assignments that I had before I went to Sacramento was I was a battalion chief on the other side of Summit Road. I had, I had the area from Gilroy, from Mount Madonna, all the way over to South San Jose. So I've got a pretty good understanding of of. The community, the the conditions. I've fought a lot of fires in these hills. Um, when the computer starts making the map, it. It asks two questions right off the get go is, is it, is it flat? Or is it steep? And we know the answer to is it flat? For a lot of the areas around here, typically that's a no. The next thing the computer does is it takes those flat areas. And those steep areas and it says, is it grass or will it become grass? Is it brush or will it become brush? Is it timber? Or will it become timber? And as you look at those, the maps, it's attempting to grab. Flat grass, steep grass, flat brush, steep brush, flat timber, steep timber. And the single biggest thing that I see on the map for this area road is just based on the colors of the map. I see the west facing slopes, the southwest facing slopes. Uh, off of Summit Road are generally going to be orange. And what typically stacks up against those slopes? Clouds, marine layer, moisture. Um, what's on the other side of Summit Road on the Santa Clara side of Summit Road? It's typically going to be heavier vegetation because it's not that warmer southwest. Aspect, it's that. Uh, wetter, more moisture retaining uh, northeast exposure than that northeast aspect. And uh, generally the kind of fuels that grow on that side are a little bit more uh, heavy. Um, may initially be a little bit more resistant to fire. And. That side doesn't have nearly the pronounced marine layer. That uh, that this side of of the hill does. So when I immediately noticed that on the map, that gave me a lot of confidence in the map. One element to that map that's new that I referenced is a weather component that we didn't have before. So um. But what we found in this new map is generally those areas that experience a much higher humidity. Less wind. Are generally wanting to be a. A lowered. Versus areas of. A hundred. Other.
Yeah, it looks like we lost touch with our host. That's too bad.
And it's intentional is what have the homeowners been doing? We don't take into account risk mitigation. Um, we don't take into account water supply. We don't take into account the quality of the local fire department. Because those things can change seasonally. Those things can change from year to year. You as a landowner may have great fuel treatments, uh. But if if you can no longer do those fuel treatments, or if you change the property changes hands, maybe that next land steward. Um, isn't as aggressive. So when we have our hazard maps, what we're looking at is a incredibly long term look on the landscape. We're looking at a thirty year to fifty year look on the landscape. And a great question that that came up in the back. Um, related to that was when was the last time that we did these maps? And the fact that we did them back in uh, two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven. Uh, so it's been about fifteen years, give or take. And um. When you look at that long term change on the landscape, it doesn't change that much. But what have we experienced in the last fifteen years within California? I know I was uh, on the Oakland Hills fire, was also on the Cedar Fire in San Diego in two thousand and three. That was a two hundred and fifty thousand acre fire burnt almost three thousand homes. I knew that that was gonna be. It's gonna sound. Rough to say. I knew that was gonna be the high watermark. Of my career. That was gonna be my career fire. I was never gonna see a fire bigger than two hundred and fifty thousand acres. I was never gonna see. That kind of home loss. And now over the last ten to fifteen years, I've had a career fire uh, every single year. And I'm not foolish enough to say anymore. It can't get any worse than that. So I rambled a little bit. I apologize.
Thank you for that. Um. So. Where we are with this map test, uh, and uh. When do we think that this map is going to um, uh, make it through um, and be adopted?
So I knew I shouldn't have put the mic down. I've got a couple of quick bullet points uh, to go over based on that question as well as uh, some earlier questions that I. Fielded. So consider that this map is in two big chunks. And those two big chunks, as Frank mentioned, is state responsibility. Our wildlands and local responsibility, our cities and and valley floors and our agglance. Um, we are only doing state responsibility area right now. Uh, that's the maps that you see behind us and that's driven by government code. That's got a process that we're expecting is going to finish up by the end of the year. And then at that point, we are going to make a completely new pivot. And follow government code this time for L R A and not. Public resource code. So public resource code is driving this map effort. Government code tells us how to do. Our L R A, our local responsibility effort. Um. If I had to guess, we're looking at maybe early twenty twenty four. And this process is taking about a year. Uh, we're expecting that at least that long, we anticipate that we're going to be doing hundreds of cities plus all fifty eight counties. For this effort, we've only done state responsibility area for uh, the the fifty six counties that have. State responsibility area, Sutter County, um, up north where I am in San Francisco County or the two counties in the state that don't have state responsibility area. Did I answer that question? And and a couple more points that I had. Um, we started mapping fire hazard severity zones back in the eighties. Um, we mapped them again in the nineties. We mapped them again post big fires in two thousand and three. That was the two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven map version. And now here we are about ten to fifteen years later, looking to do um. Both sets of remaps, our state responsibility area and our local responsibility area. If you didn't make the comment periods and and we had several. I I personally attended about forty of the county meetings. I attended in person about uh, fifteen of the county meetings and I missed maybe two or three county meetings because we had some double booking. There is nothing that you would have gathered from those county meetings that aren't also available on our website. Uh, Frank mentioned that if you use your favorite uh, search engine and uh, and punch in. F H S Z for fire hazard severity zone and O F S M. You will get our uh, pages. As Frank mentioned, we have videos, we have our scientific videos, we have scientific modeling explanations. Um, it's soup to nuts, everything. We've got. Quickly asked questions. We've got the different versions of maps as we opened up our comment period. We had a few changes. We received over uh, thirteen hundred comments. We evaluated all of them and there were some comments that drove changes. Um, we had a second comment period that that created. A smaller number of comments and we're finishing up our third comment period. Uh, one of the questions was how this was going to conclude. Uh, and we're expecting that it's going to go through the regulatory process sometime uh, later this fall. Uh, early into winter before the year ends. The only other item that I had, and this is probably a great kickoff if if we're gonna hand it off to insurance or any other questions. I'll give you an anecdotal story and it's not related to wildfire. We're gonna, we're gonna use hurricanes as an example. So when my father graduated high school in Tennessee, he wanted to get as far away from Tennessee as he could. He ended up in Hawaii. And imagine him asking me about hurricanes. Imagine him asking me about uh, hurricane hazards. Versus hurricane risk. So he has says, hey, Scott. Um, what can I do to reduce the hazard, the occurrence? Of a hurricane coming over my property? Yeah, dad, probably much. So that's an underlying hazard. Now imagine him asking me, hey, Scott, what can I do to reduce the damage that might occur from a hurricane? And that's what risk is. And you can ask yourself the same question. We're right on the San Andreas Fault. Ask yourself that question. What can I do to reduce the likelihood of an earthquake occurring? Versus what can I do to reduce the damage that an earthquake would produce? And generally, the insurance industry cares about those risks, the damage and risk mitigation. And what are you doing to limit the damage? Our maps intentionally do not look at those risk mitigations. And here's the reason why. We want to use these hazards and advertise these hazards to drive things that will reduce damage. So these maps require clearances. These maps require a higher uh, construction standard. These maps require a greater safety standard for subdivisions built. In the long term. Thirty, fifty, seventy five years out. If you are in a mapped hazard area and your community has built itself with. With the laws and regulations that um, are in place because of those hazard areas. My bet is those higher hazard areas will have less loss than those areas that aren't in a zone. So that's, that's my belief. I I genuinely believe that. I I do hope that's the case and we're. Mapping things uh, with our damage inspection program that's starting to show those things out. Houses that are built to these standards, fuel treatments that are done in an area, all of these things lower the risk. The hazard still exists, but we want to see that risk lowered, which means less losses, less damage.
Insurance industry use this now?
So. My answer, my belief is no, but they they would use some known components. We know fire burns faster uphill. That's both a hazard. And that has the potential of being a risk. So there may be parts, known parts of our map model that are used. Slope, aspect, you know, generally unchangeable things. But again, those those insurance maps generally will not. Uh, just look at that hazard. They care about the damage, right? What what does the insurance company has have to pay for? They have to pay for that damage. They have to pay for that loss. Mitigations can reduce that damage, reduce that. Those losses. And in our talks with C D I and we've got somebody with C D I talking soon that. Generally, we're finding the insurance. generally, we're finding the insurance companies aren't using our maps because they don't look at loss. They're using their own proprietary maps, they think their maps are gonna be the best for their customers. They think the maps are gonna help them identify areas of high loss or low loss, and they go ahead and respond on their own map products.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks. What we're gonna do is we're gonna pivot now, we're gonna move into the real estate topic. And those of you who do have questions, write them on your cards and we will be uh coming by later to pick them up to uh use them in our Q and A session. So what I'd like to find out actually is um online, do we have um Richie Sayavong from California Department of Insurance?
I'm here, Tracy. Or Tammy, sorry. Yes, I'm here.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So um Richie Sayavong, uh he, as I mentioned, um serves a central coast region and helps us understand um this evening uh how we look at um from the insurance perspective, uh what's happening with us. So thanks Richie, I understand we've got a presentation you're gonna speak to.
So good evening, uh as mentioned, my name is Richie Sayavong, I am the outreach analyst with the Department of Insurance, and I serve you as your as your uh outreach analyst within the area. So let me go over quickly what the Department of Insurance is, uh the role of Commissioner for Carla. Uh the role of Commissioner is protect the consumer from fraud and abuse from insurance companies by regulating the insurance marketplace. We are making sure um you know, insurance lines such as homeowners, autos, life and health insurance, just to name a few, are regulated and we're maintaining insurance insure or solvency, meaning when you file a claim with your insurance company, they have the ability to pay what they are promising you. We also regulate the insurance companies, uh agents, brokers that sell insurance by setting the standards for agent and broker licensing. We perform market conduct reviews of insurance companies, we resolve consumer complaints, investigate and prosecute insurance fraud to protect consumers. And we are here to help you, the consumer, and if you ever have a problem with your insurance company, agent or broker, do call us for help. We have a team available to check the status of a broker or agent license and to ensure that they are actually licensed to sell insurance. Believe it or not, there are people in the state that will sell insurance and will pocket that premium money. So it is important to know, although we do regulate the insurance marketplace, we cannot compel, force or demand that they sell insurance. After all, they are a business. Next slide. So as of uh two thousand nineteen, we've met with more than a hundred fifty thousand Californians to hear their issues concerning wildfire and insurance through over eight hundred and seventy five events in all counties of California. So a quick progress report as well, uh with Commissioner Lara, he has removed barriers to allow wildfire survivors to receive insur- critical insurance benefits such as covered for evacuation expenses, extension to additional living expenses, and created disclosures and coverage to meet upgraded building codes. Uh one thing that Commissioner Lara also pushed forward was a one year moratorium for non renewals, which did help more than four million policyholders. And with in that same realm, we did increase the non renewal notice from forty five to seventy five days. So big improvements to the fair plan haven't made under Commissioner Lara, and it has been not uh the fair plan policy and coverages have not been touched in many decades. So uh what Commissioner Lara has been pushing has, he's been asking the fair plan to provide a more complete H O three policy, and the fair plan did sue us. The Commissioner Juan, as the judge upheld the commissioner's authority, and the fair plan is continually suing us over this issue. So we did hold a investigatory hearing on July thirteenth on the fair plan and how it can better serve homeowner and commercial consumers. And of course, uh with the coverage limits, commercial coverage has been increased to twenty million dollars. Um something that hasn't been accessed before, uh commercial buildings and agricultural businesses were not able to access the fair plan previously. And now they are able to access that. Um can with continued engagement with local county and state officials, along with consumer groups, businesses and the insurance industry, Commissioner Lara has been making great progress, especially in this industry. Um you know, it it's one of those things that Commissioner Lara will, he gets very, very passionate about this topic. And of course, we have been able to develop something much greater and the first of its kind throughout the nation. So as I mentioned, the department is available to review specific H O A uh matters with legal representatives because uh H O As do have a little bit more uh complicated bylaws. So the one thing that Commissioner Lara has been focusing on is the safe wildfires framework, it is the first of its kind. But of course, we know that there's a lot more work to do. And in our meetings with community leaders and leaders in this space, uh Commissioner Lara realized everyone was working on this issue on their own. And you know, everyone has their expertise, but not necessarily considering all the issues that policyholders have to deal with. So the Department of Insurance worked with the state's emergency response and preparedness agencies, including Cal Fire and the governor's office of emergency services to create a list of actions you can take to protect yourself from wildfires, and we call it uh safer wildfires one, two, three. And then uh Commissioner Lara has directed insurance companies to provide discounts to consumers under our new safer for wildfires framework with transparency about risk rating. So uh it's pretty simple, um let me go over this pretty quickly, I'll show these slides. So the regulation is intended to protect your home or business, immediate surrounding area, and to protect the whole community. Uh this requires insurance companies to submit new rates that recognize the benefit of safety measures, such as an upgraded roof, windows, defensible space and community wide programs such as Firewise USA and the Fire Risk Reduction Community, so F R R C, which is a designation developed by the State's Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, which currently includes the counties of Los Angeles, Santa Barbara and Butte, as well as cities and local districts. So let me go through these real quick. So the big thing, uh step one, of course, as mentioned, protecting the structure, pretty straightforward, a class A fire rated roof, a fire uh five foot ember resistant zone around the structure, non combustible six inches at the bottom of walls, ember and fire resistant vents, double pane windows, or added shutters, enclosed eaves, cleared vegetation and debris from under decks, uh move sheds and outbuildings to at least thirty feet away, uh trim trees and remove brush in compliance with state and local defensible laws. Uh and of course, the neighborhood can form a Firewise USA community. And cities, counties and local districts can be certified as a fire risk reduction community. Uh so with this new regulation that Commissioner Lara has been putting in, uh there are three things that we are looking that have been put in place that consumers will see. So we are requiring insurance companies to provide discounts to homeowners and businesses for their homes, uh when they are missing mitigating their homes. So when you're making these improvements, uh the insurance companies do have to recognize this. So we are also providing transparency about wildfire risk scores, as mentioned previously, um you know, do the insurance companies look at the fire hazard severity zone maps? No, they do not. So these companies do run their own independent mapping on how the level of risk on each property. So another part of that uh regulation, it gives consumers the right to appeal. Uh so your risk determination is given to you at four different occasions. Uh when you are applying for a new policy, you receive that within fifteen days with uh before you renew a policy within forty five days. And if you are non renewed, you have seventy five days to receive that. And when you do complete mitigation and you're requesting a new score with your uh insurance, you have thirty days, uh they have thirty days to let you know. And the Department of Insurance does have oversight over this, uh so if you feel that anything is unfair and if you were to uh which if you were declined a norman, if you were sent a non renewal for this reason, if it was uh because of the hazard fire severity map, uh you do submit a request of request for assistance with the Department of Insurance, and we are available to assist you with that manner. As I mentioned, the insurance companies did have until April twelfth to submit their plans on how they will incorporate these regulations. And we have that on our website where these plans have already approved, as well as information about discounts that are provided from these insurance companies. So the framework is working, um premium discounts are available to two out of five uh every consumer. And with up to twenty percent for wildfire hardened homes, six times the increase since two thousand and nineteen. And with the safer from wildfire framework, uh the all insurance companies will have to incorporate and understand that uh mitigation efforts onto your property or your parcel will be considered. And as I mentioned, you can check the Department of Insurance website on which insurance companies are currently offering discounts. Uh discounts do vary based on your insurance company uh as well as designations for Firewise and F R R Cs. So as I mentioned, we are with the community, I am with the Community Relations Outreach Branch, uh I do serve the Central Coast as well as the Central Valley. Uh if there are ever any events that can better serve your community, feel free to reach out to me and we I will be more than willing to come and visit and work with your community. But um as I mentioned, the Department of Insurance, we are available Monday through Friday from eight to four. Uh we have a promise that if you ever need a callback, you'll get a callback within two minutes with live agent. Uh our phone number is eight eight hundred nine two seven four three five seven. Um it's also eight hundred nine two seven help, and our website is insurance dot C A dot gov. And uh we'll take it back to you, Tammy.
Thank you Richie.
Yes.
Um and I apologize, uh we we are having a little bit of technical difficulties with uh the Zoom, and thanks for um sticking with us, everyone. Um so uh Richie, what do you know, is the is the industry allowed to use information from these uh this fire zone severity maps? For their underwriting or you know, what do they do?
So they are not to include that into their guidelines, um there is no specific eligibility as one of their uh for underwriting. So if you receive a non renewal and they reference the uh fire hazard severity zone map, do file a request for assistance with the Department of Insurance or give us a call because they are not allowed to do that.
Interesting.
Yes.
All right. Now I know that insurance is a is actually a really big issue here, we've hear it um from people up and down the valley, challenges that they have. Um and uh with being non renewed, challenges of getting on the fair plan, challenges of the price of the fair plan. Um and um I'm also aware that uh very recently, um Commissioner Lara essentially announced a sustainable insurance strategy that is uh specifically now looking at um you know, what uh ways that the um industry must be required to um give us options to reduce our rates. Um we won't have the opportunity here tonight to go into these details, but we do feel like this insurance uh topic is of significant importance to all of that. To that end, uh Sliven actually reached out to Gail Pelleran's office um so that we could meet again. Um do you want uh to announce the, do we have a date to announce for that? I'm gonna get give Gail a mic here. Sorry, I'm gonna be off camera.
We are gonna have, we're gonna have a insurance town hall on November first via Zoom. So I just got that date. And also, just um the state, should I stand up or just stay here? Okay, the State Assembly and the State Senate has been working on this issue with a working group for for the year, pretty much. Um I got actively involved in the last few months, really hoping to get something in legislation to the governor and uh couldn't get agreement, but we're hopeful with the insurance commissioner's plan and want to continue to work with the insurance commissioner and the governor to resolve these issues because it's a crisis for folks that we're getting the non renewals and getting the cancellations. So we're continuing to work on this issue over the interim as well. I think there might be some interim hearings as well for the state, so we'll keep you posted.
That is fantastic, Gail, thank you so much. So um and thank you, um Richie, why don't you hang on with us and maybe folks will have some questions for you uh near the end. Um thank you so much for sharing your presentation with us.
Thank you.
Um I wanted to mention, there's a another group who we um were not able to get to join us this evening, but I'd like to tell you about them. Um and they are called United Policyholders. So United Policyholders is a nonprofit organization. Um their mission is, I'm reading some material from their website. Uh their mission is to be a trustworthy and useful information resource and effective voice for consumers of all types of insurance in all fifty states. Um they host a dynamic library of publications, sample documents, links and reports, their website is U P help dot O R G. Some of you uh may have actually heard of United Policyholders because they had gotten in um involved in um helping some of our local folks in their recovery process from the C Z U fires. And in my impression, they have just grown in their um ability and resources to help uh consumers. And um I really recommend that um you look them up. They have created an initiative uh that um uh is called the Wildfire Risk Reduction and Asset Program, W R A P, uh supported by a statewide network of resiliency advocates and the governor's office of emergency services. Um they have a working group um that is developing wildfire mitigated dwelling standards for existing homes. They uh they did this in two thousand and twenty one. Their goal was to develop agreed upon standards that can be officially recognized, so insurance companies can offer a discount or incentive, not dropping customers for completing these steps. Um and uh they have noticed that uh what they've done with the these, their list of dwelling standards um is largely identical to the safer for wildfire standards that is promoted by uh California Department of Insurance, those items that we spoke to again in that list. Um very similar to what United Policyholders um is uh promoting. Um and so uh it's 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 very much like a shared goal, so United Policyholders wrap mitigated dwelling measures, class A fire rated roof, ember resistant vents, clear five foot uh home ignition zone, six inches non combustible clearance at base of exterior, no combustible materials under deck, limo branches, maintained and irrigated landscape, last five feet of any fencing attached to home must be non combustible materials. Um if other combustible structure is within twenty five feet of dwelling, facing walls of dwelling must include tempered glass, dual window, non combustible fire rated cladding. So just wanted to read all those details out for you to get a sense that um there there are uh that what United Policyholders is doing is also very closely aligned to what we see coming out of um California Department of Insurance. I think that um heartens us to understand really how serious these measures are and and why they are being proposed. Um they uh in, and I'll close with this. Um uh you can, they they said that their most popular uh resources online in their RAP Resource Center is the California Home Insurance Shopping Help page. And um they also have um um webinars and meetings uh with this working group. And they have a uh meeting recording that features um a presentation from a broker about the California Fair Plan discounts for home hardening and defensible space. So we've put those links also on the Sliven website, so you can find these links. I encourage you to um look into the United Policyholders uh group and what they are up to, find them to be very educational, and I regret that they couldn't be here, but we hope to get them um in person at the um upcoming insurance town hall. Okay, and with that, what I'd like to do now is um pivot and let's talk a little bit about uh real estate, and so with us this evening, again, is Logan Andren.
Hi, my name's uh Logan Andren, I live in Boulder Creek, I moved to San Lorenzo Valley in two thousand and eight. And uh I'm here today, well, first of all, I'd like to thank our uh speakers this evening, so thank you for all the great information. Wanted to speak a little bit about the real estate market and what I'm seeing in terms of home sales and values, so. So one thing that I don't think was mentioned was that any home can still get insurance to this day, and that would typically be with the California Fair Plan at this time. This is something that I have to or that I'm happy to explain to buyers that are moving into the area. They they ask about insurance. They say, can I even get insurance? And the answer is yes. The financial institutions, well, unless unless you're buying a home with cash, you're actually going to be required to have home insurance, uh, fire insurance policy. So this is, sorry, I have my notes up here. This is definitely, it's gotten way more expensive, you know, insurance policy. It might have gone up fourfold annually for a fire insurance policy. We also saw the same thing in twenty seventeen with with flood insurance. Those kind of went up in a in a similar proportion to what we're seeing right now with with fire insurance. And and maybe you could say that that was perhaps a knee jerk reaction with the flood insurance, but they've since kind of come back down to the to more of a baseline with with flood insurance. But right now, you know, it's it's common knowledge, but there's not really private insurers offering insurance up here. So you have to go with the fair plan. And it's it's not, I don't know, it's it's not ideal coverage, but it's something that the buyer has to get in order to to get the the loan. So um, the average home price now in Boulder Creek is hovering a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, the average price. In quarter one of twenty twenty, kind of before COVID and the fires, the average price was and I'm referencing Boulder Creek with these numbers, but the average price was six hundred thirty thousand in quarter one of twenty twenty. And again, now we're hovering above eight hundred thousand. So there's so many things that you would think would um, cause our prices to dampen, but we're still seeing multiple offers. People just really want to live up here. I think there, well, there's a lot of money not too far away in the Silicon Valley, right? During COVID, the, what do I say? The tech workers from Silicon Valley, you know, they they come out here and they they make really good money and they kind of drove the the prices up during twenty twenty. I mean, with the option to work from home, a lot of our houses up here have high speed Comcast internet. So you could work from home and own a property for a fraction of what it costs to own in Silicon Valley. So that drove our prices up. You know, and and the fires didn't really seem to dampen the the prices or the sales of properties up here. Another thing that you would, again, you would think would finally slow down the the rate of growth that we're seeing with the appreciation of property values is that the recent point of sale septic ordinance that passed in July. More stringent test, you know, of a forty minute water flow of the leach field as opposed to the prior twenty minute test and just more strict regulations with the septic systems we're on. Um, be- before that happened, people thought, oh, Jesus, this is really gonna hurt the the property values. And that was back in July and homes are still selling. So my question, what I ask myself is I wonder who this is really, you know, this this increase in insurance rates and policies getting dropped. I'm wondering who that who that's hurting the most, you know? Maybe if someone's lived in their house a long time and they're on a fixed income, it might be harder for them to stomach an increase of, you know, five hundred, a thousand a month for a fair plan and policy versus someone who makes two hundred thousand dollars a year, who does qualify for that eight hundred thousand dollar loan. So um, yep, that's in a nutshell, right? Homes are selling very quickly and multiple offers above asking. And that's also with with the high interest rates and all these other things that I just went over. So that's kind of in summary, what I'm seeing out in the field. Right. I mean, I I you can get the insurance policy, it's just not as as good of a, I don't want to say good, well, as comprehensive as a policy as it was before when when State Farm was still doing policies up here and other big insurance companies were issuing policies. So that was nice to hear. I think Richie had mentioned that they're trying to go back and reassess the the coverages for the fair plan because I don't think that those have been really updated for a little bit. So it'll be nice to have some comprehensive policies and I'm really happy to hear that he's working on that, the commissioner. Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to thank Logan for his comments about real estate in our area. It is a concern of ours to understand, you know, what is the impacts for for us with our with our property. So thanks for that. Um, let's move on to our next and subject, which is Firewise. So with us is Lindsay Speck. And Lindsay, why don't you go ahead and let us know? Uh, tell us about Firewise and also you could speak to, you know, your own experience within your community. I'll pass the mic to Lindsay.
Hello. Uh, my name is Lindsay Speck and I am from Ben Lomond. And I'm representing a Firewise community off of Alba Road. Um, so like many people in our community, it was a wake up call, to say the least, to go through the CZU fire. Um, obviously, Alba Road, if you haven't driven up, was heavily impacted. Um, and so that started my journey in finding out more about what Firewise was all about. Um, and so I started to work with the Fire Safe Council and Chief Brownlee of Ben Lomond Fire Department um, end of twenty twenty into twenty twenty one to get recognized as a Firewise community. We received a recognition, I think, spring of twenty twenty two. Um, and then I started working with a small group of folks from SLV, many of which are here, um, to start doing outreach to connect with the community and try to educate and let people know what it was all about. Um, and so we have been working vigilantly to get more Firewise communities within SLV. Um, and so that's kind of what I'm here to talk about. Um, and so Firewise is a certification that goes through a group called the National Fire Protection Association. They're writing down on my notes, so I wouldn't mess that up, called the NFPA. It's a nonprofit organization that covers many fire and safety issues, including wildfire. Um, and we work with CAL FIRE to get that certification. Um, the most common question I feel like we get when we talk to people about Firewise is can I, can I as an individual be Firewise? Um, and that isn't really what it's all about. Um, it's about community and getting to know your neighbors and working together um, to create a more resilient wildfire safe, uh, just a group as a whole. Um, and so Firewise communities can be as small as eight. So if you are an individual, you have to find seven friends to join you. Um, and it can be as big as twenty five hundred. Um, so our community is about a hundred and thirteen households, covering about two hundred fifty residents. And the way that it works is you have a committee of folks from your community. So I have a committee member here as well. Uh, and so we work together to create a three year strategic plan, working with Chief Brownlee specifically about our community. What are things that we need to do to improve our our chances, like how can we make things better for for our neighborhood? Um, and then every year, once a year, we come together and hold an held, hold an educational event. Um, so one of the missions is to bring information and learnings to the community directly. Um, so it is very much this sort of grassroots, um, community organizing type movement. Um, and then the bar to be Firewise is is quite low. Um, you need to have recorded at least one hour or thirty dollars of wildfire reduction work per household. Um, so I think for our community, the minimum bar was four thousand dollars or something or equivalent hours. And we ended up doing, I think it was like two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of work. Um, and I think just living in SLV, even like using your blower to clear like the five feet around your house is is counted as one of these things. Um, and we live within the forest, we're part of the forest. There's just like a lot of maintenance and things we have to do to be able to live that way. And so it's very easy for you to meet that that goal. We couldn't have done it without the Fire Safe Council, um, which is a nonprofit out of Santa Cruz. That provides tons of different resources and outreach for for wildfire preparedness. And if you haven't visited their website, you absolutely should. There's tons of good information out there. Um, and then if you are interested in in becoming a Firewise community, that's the first place to start. Um, there is a fabulous woman, Lynn, who will help you on your journey. And I can't say enough great things about Lynn. Um, she's so helpful and supportive in helping folks go through this process. Um, but uh, in Santa Cruz County right now, we have fifty two Firewise communities, which is about four, uh, four thousand four hundred households. Um, and there are eight in SLV with more to come. Um, one of the questions that we get sometimes is like, how does Santa Cruz County compare to the rest of California? Um, I think we're not number one, although I think somebody else may be able to correct me, but we're towards the top. Um, definitely, there are, there's a lot of energy in Santa Cruz County to go Firewise and to be thinking about, um, you know, community preparedness. And how do we, as a group, come together to do more? To to be prepared and build resiliency. Why Firewise? Why do it? Obviously, insurance discounts are really helpful and you can get one if you're a Firewise community. Um, I'm on the CAL Fair Plan, as I think many people probably are. And I believe my discount is about eight percent, although you should call your broker and find out if you are Firewise. You're constantly being able to learn new things and be more and more prepared. Um, the last event that we did was sort of like an Ask Me Anything with Chief Brownlee, which was great. Well attended, we recorded it, people had tons of questions. Obviously, there are lots of questions about CZU. Um, so even through the process, we're building closer relationships with our first responders, which I think is really important. We get to build closer relationships with each other. Um, so I don't think I've ever lived in a community where I knew as many people as I do, which I'm so grateful for, especially after these last winter storms. I think the work with Firewise totally helped for that too, being able to know who to call. And, you know, we had a giant redwood tree block our road and I knew who had the giant chainsaw to call to help clear it out. Um, thanks to kind of like this community movement. Um, and then this is kind of why I got into it in the first place is I thought a lot about my community repairing and bouncing back from CZU. Um, and I did a lot of research about, you know, what what kind of sets you up for success as a community? And one of the things that really called out to me were communities with lots of well developed um, formal and informal social networks and high social capital tend to be able to bounce back from disasters faster. And so for me, I feel like I see that, even when we're kind of in this slow motion, we're definitely in kind of like crawl walk with my Firewise community. I feel like I can see that we will be so much better prepared today than we were in twenty twenty. Um, and I I just thank my neighborhood for that and people being engaged.
A fantastic story. Thank you so much for sharing that. So um, uh, my neighborhood, we're, I would say that, you know, currently we're Firewise interested. I think a year ago, we were a lot less Firewise interested, but but recently we are. What would you say is like the biggest tips for somebody who's in a position like me where like, boy, we think we've got some interest, we want to start talking about it. What would you say is like the the winning strategy to move forward?
I think number one would be call Lynn. Uh, number two would be, we actually, through all of the Firewise community, there's actually a great um, Santa Cruz County and Santa Clara County, we're kind of all kind of, you know, snuggled together. Um, there's a great network of people who have already gone through it. I think within our SLV group, we're constantly like, hey, how did you do this? And just sharing knowledge. Um, and so you don't have to recreate the wheel, really, like people have already done it and just copy what they did. Um, especially like we were just sharing a survey that you could just copy and like send to your community instead. There's tons of stuff like that and there is a really robust, well connected group in Santa Cruz County for that.
All right, great. Um, uh, so I know that we mentioned Lynn, this is Lynn Lynn Sestak. Um, and and she's with Fire Safe Council, right? Um, so she's, she's, I know she's given some advice to you. So unfortunately, Lynn wasn't able to be here this evening. Um, and maybe if she would, she would be speaking about what's called a home ignition zone assessment, H I Z. Could you tell us about that?
So the H I Z program is currently a pilot. Um, but thankfully, the pilot is happening in San Lorenzo Valley, so we get a little bit of a buff. There's lots of evaluators here in SLV. And essentially, it's you as a homeowner can request an H I Z where somebody will come to your home, an assessor who went through a training, um, and they will walk around your property with you to evaluate it for welfare risk and give you some really great tips on how to harden your home. It's totally free, doesn't get documented anywhere, there's no, you know, you can't get a fine, there's no pass or fail. Um, it's really just to educate. Um, and I would highly recommend, I brought some handouts to this event, they're in the back. Um, so you can snag one if it's something that you're interested in. Um, I think it's just, it's really helpful. And actually, I I wrote a note that a lot of the ideas and and advice that you'll likely get from the assessor will kind of tie in well with the wildfire framework and the kind of the thing that the the insurance person was sharing.
Like so.
They'll be able to to give you specific advice for your property and your structures.
So, uh, one of the things I do is interface with the Fire Safe Councils as part of my job. And the home ignition zone assessment that they do is nearly identical to the defensible space inspection that you would get from either a CAL FIRE employer or local government fire service employee who comes to do their defensible space inspection on your home. So it's like getting us, sort of like us getting us there, except there's no consequence, as you said. There's no pass or fail, it's simply the things that we would look at when we're looking at what the Public Resource Code says about defensible space and then the recommendation that you fix that.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay. Um, I want to thank our speakers. We are now going to be able to transition into a question and answer period. So maybe some of you have been writing question cards and in the room here on the left and the right side, someone who can pick up your questions for you if you want to pass them. I'm gonna have you hold on one sec because we can hear you in the room, but nobody else on the Zoom can. So I'm gonna bring you a microphone. Well, all right. I'm gonna entertain you, but I'm gonna hold you to three minutes. Okay. Hold on, let me get you the mic.
Sent this information.
And and sorry, your name is?
Bud Stuckey.
Bud Stuckey.
I sent this information to our supervisor friend, Mr. Ferson, over here. I got no response on any wildfire mitigation programs. I emailed every member of the Fulton Fire District's Board Directors. I got no information, I got no response on wildfire mitigation. I got no response on wildfire mitigation. I invited Cal Fire to my house, Felton Fire to my house, and they came. We had a discussion. I've looked at the fire response uh by grand juries from the Oakland Fire for years. And the thing to read about in there, you can just Google this if you want to spend all your day on the computer, is that the things that they recommend, the lessons learned are the same for the last hundred years. We are not doing the things that we're talking about that the grand juries are imposing on our leaders. I heard uh the head of FEMA on the television the other night saying that uh she was so frustrated because of the uh hurricanes, the atmospheric rivers, earthquakes, fires, droughts, all this. He said, quote, "The operational season now is year-round. Invest in mitigation and resiliency to help these communities like us reduce the impact so we don't have such complicated simple mitigation. Cal Fire says that ten feet from the road, ninety percent of the fires start. Why don't we fix ten feet from the road? I had everything that every one of the firewise, that every uh uh Cal Fire Fire Safe, every program that I could find, the LE one hundred from Cal Fire, I modeled a program for it for Felton that designed as based on a landscape consultation. I did every single thing and I put rooftop sprinklers on it, run by generators and sump pumps so I could pump my rainwater in case they shut the power off me. I've done all the five feet. I've done thirty thousand pounds of stone for fire breaks. I've done everything with cement around the house, vents, roofs. I've probably spent close to thirty to forty thousand dollars in mitigation efforts on my property alone. I live a quarter of a mile or less from a fire station. I have a fire hydrant across the street and multiple firefighters on my street. Farmers canceled my insurance after my inspection from Felton Fire Chief Robert Gray. And what they said is what I sent to McPherson's office, Mr. McPherson's office over here, with what he said to me, he said, this is a quote from Farmers Insurance. It does not matter what you do, your policy is canceled in October. And I challenge anybody in Santa Cruz County to come to my house and look and see if you have a more of a fire-prepared house and neighborhood than ours. And why was I canceled? No response from my supervisors, no response from the fire chief, no response from the insurance company. And the only mitigation I can find on any website, other than the Cal Fair Plan, is with USAA, which I'm a veteran and I'm a member of, and their mitigation plan says that they will actually bring a firefighting crew to your house if you pass. I can't pass because my trees touch. That's how I feel with that one.
Thank you very much, Bud. Um, and you know, I think that that really speaks to why the insurance topic is so important and why we will have a town hall because your experience sadly, not just your experience, of my understanding, and it is important. So thank you for sharing that. Yep, um, uh Richie, are you still online, California Department of Insurance? Do you have any?
Yes, I am. So, yes, and this is something we are facing throughout the whole state of California. Yes, and it's the Fair Plan, of course, is what people have to resort to. And it's not an ideal situation for many Californians, uh but we are looking to address those issues. And yeah, it it, there are many things that they are canceling people for. And it it's beyond our means. It makes no sense to me and it makes no sense to many others. And it's it's very frustrating. And we really understand that, you know, it is something that we want to address, especially with these insurers, because they do A, B, and C. And you know, there are, you know, in in my experience meeting with other Californians throughout the state of California, uh, there was a group that I met in Yosemite West, you know, ten minutes away from the Yosemite Valley floor. A home that is made completely out of metal and they were still having to resort to the Fair Plan. That it's ridiculous, you know, that house won't catch fire and yet they are still denied coverage. So yes, this is something that Commissioner Lara is working to address to help, you know, really, really stipulate and increase this marketplace to where there you're going to have more options besides just, you know, farmers or State Farm. Which I had to mention, they have paused business, but with the new regulations that Commissioner Lara has put in place um nationwide was close to uh submitting a letter to pause all business in California, but they have recently rescinded that letter. So with these regulations, it's working and these insurers are staying here in California.
Richie, alright, so Allison is here. Uh, she's collected the cards and so she's going to help facilitate questions for our speakers. So go ahead, Allison.
Okay, um, we have a lot of questions all over the map here, so I'll try to try to do some order here. I'll start with Cal Fire questions. Um, first question is how granular is the data in these fire risk maps? Uh, the questioner is worried about broad risk determinations.
Thanks for the question. So if that wasn't heard online, uh how uh how granular is the data? Um, there are different data sets that we bring together. Uh, generally, a safe rule of thumb is as small as a thirty-meter cell and as large maybe as a two-kilometer cell. Um, the thirty-meter cell might be for fuels. Uh, the the larger two-kilometer cell might be for weather. Um, and those bigger cells kind of drop scores into the smaller cells. Uh, that's my nickel uh answer. And if you go to our F H S Z O S F M webpage, um, there's a short, maybe four or five-minute video that talks about how they stitch those different data sources together and how those scores are computed. Um, the last part to that, I had mentioned earlier when I talked about starting off with uh, is it steep? Is it flat? What kind of fuels those are? Those get aggregated into zones, typically a a couple hundred acres in size. That's kind of the smallest zone size and then a score is added to that based on a couple underlying factors.
Uh, next question is another Cal Fire one. Uh, why trust the modeling when there is no consensus on which model uh to use and which is best predictive and which model is best predictive? Some of the zones don't match what is actually existent uh using the modeled items as in slopes, aspect, et cetera.
So a couple parts to that question, and it's again addressed in the videos that we have on our uh Fire Hazard Severity Zone webpage. Uh, the color that you might be in, whether it's very high, high, or moderate, which is red, orange, or yellow. The idea behind that is if you happen to be in a red area, that should be a similar hazard that you could experience anywhere in the state. So if you're red here in Santa Cruz County, if you're red up at the Oregon border, if you're red down in uh San Diego County, then then that hazard should exist. Um, there are as many models as you want to build for whatever you want the outputs to be. Um, our models were narrowly defined um by the legislature. Uh, we enacted that. Uh, and um it went through a very extensive vetting process. So the model that we're using isn't much different than the model that we used fifteen years ago. We did uh refresh some data layers, uh more current data layers. We also added the weather component that Frank talked about. And then importantly, we really kicked the tires on this model once we built it. And what I mean by that is we had a scientific academic air review at the same time that it was being reviewed internally by Cal Fire staff. As an example, I was involved directly in the remodel process fifteen years ago. Uh, I was working out of the Nevada Yuba Placer Cal Fire Unit. Um, I had all five counties within that unit. I also had a couple Bay Area counties, um and a couple counties, uh Amador and El Dorado County that I assisted with. So I had a deep experience uh from it back then. Um, it it, I had a lot of comfort when I saw the model as we rolled it out uh this time. And then using my thirty years of of Cal Fire experience, using Frank's almost thirty years of Cal Fire experience, we rolled this out to four uh Cal Fire units that had different influences. We used Butte County, we used Tooleme County, we we used Sonoma County, we used Riverside County. So you had different ecosystems, different landforms, different weather patterns. We we did a focused review um at that local level. Uh, and then we rolled the map out again for all of Cal Fire statewide to look at. And then we initiated the public comment period. We we did receive over thirteen hundred comments. And and again, we took action on comments that that we reviewed. Sometimes it might have been chopping up a shape in half and saying, okay, we're going to assign a lower hazard to this part of the shape for the reasons articulated. We're going to assign a higher hazard for the southern part of the shape because of specific reasons articulated. All that's discussed in depth um with within that. And the other half to that question, and my answer will be a lot shorter, is other models can include uh risk models. This this doesn't. It can in, it can include insurance models. Um, it it can include more dynamic models, like is the fire department present, are they not present? Or fuel treatments present, or are they not present? And again, the the narrow focus that we were given by the legislature looked at those long-term uh changes. Not those short-term, daily, weekly, seasonal changes.
Uh, we have a lot. Uh, we have maybe uh uh three or four more questions for Cal Fire. So let's. Okay, uh, one more for Cal Fire. Alright, um. A juicy one. Uh, maybe I can roll a several into one. Well, let's see. Gosh, uh, one of them could be addressed to Gail, so I can change that. Um. Can you address the um? Okay, let me see if I can roll these several questions into one. Uh, one person asked about doing something about abandoned property nearby. Uh, another person wanted to know about tree removal. These are all little details. Uh, and how long is an inspection good for uh in connection with uh mitigating for fire?
So locally in Santa Cruz, San Mateo Counties, um if you are within a fire district, uh Cal Fire has um a few defensible space inspectors that we schedule with your fire chief to come inspect structures in the SRA. So as far as how many structures get inspected every year, uh a lot of that is on your local chief on what he can do. Uh, some of it's on our DSI availability on what they can get to. If you live outside of the fire district, um, so Santa Cruz County, unincorporated areas outside of a fire district of Ben Loman, Boulder Creek, Felton, Zani, et cetera. We have created maps that have our station personnel come out and do an inspection on every structure in the county on a three-year rotating basis. Um, and some of that is dependent on uh how much fire activity. So once we start doing inspections, typically April, May, uh, we try to get through all of the structures that are on our list for that one out of three-year property. And then the next year, we'll do the next one. Depending on where you live, uh you will either get uh an engine company out of our rural fire station, especially if you're up on the summit, out of our Correlitis Fire Station, or out of our uh Fall Creek Fire Station up here in Bonny Dune. Or if you're out on the coast, out of our Big Creek Fire Station. Um, but at the moment, we're looking at uh once every three years for unincor- unincorporated Santa Cruz County.
I didn't want to cut that real quick. Um, so there's also two other parts to that question. There's a practical part to that and then a legal part to that. So if I have my fuels cleared around my house, if I cut the dead grass.
And we're stranded on an island for ten months. They live off of fertile.
If everybody on the Zoom call can mute their speaker, that would be much appreciated. Although Bermuda does sound nice right now. Um. So practically, this time of year right now, I've been told, hey, I need to cut my dead grass away. I haven't done it. I'm gonna do it in a in a manner that won't cause a fire cool in the morning. So let's say that happens, it's in September. Well, guess what happens next June? It hasn't been a full year, right? Practically, what do I need to do? I need to cut the dead grass back. I need to get the needles off the gutters, off the the roof and and have it be a practical fire-safe uh house. But the other part to it is if you need an AB thirty-eight inspection, a contingent on the sale of a property, those inspections are typically good for um six months, I believe. And what you don't want to do is have uh everything in escrow. Okay, we're gonna close in two days and uh oh, I need a defensible space inspection. So if you do think you're gonna sell the property, get on it ahead of time. Uh, the great thing about getting on on that ahead of time is you may have a sickly tree that shouldn't be there. Maybe it needs to be cut down. Maybe there's too many trees and you need to thin one out. Get that property in the in the saleable condition, uh the safe condition um so that it doesn't complicate that real estate sale. And the way that you can do that is you can go to Cal Fire's website, the OSFM uh website and uh put in for a defensible space inspection to make sure you get it done. It's not uncommon that if you have an inspection, they're gonna recommend uh treatments or work done around the property. Um, and now you're stuck trying to hire somebody at the last minute because you've got too many other things going on to do the work yourself. So get it done early, um and that'll help with the sale of that property.
Thank you so much. Allison, what do we have um that is in the um insurance realm? One or two questions max.
Okay, one question that I think a lot of people have is, are there company uh maps for fire risk available from insurance companies?
Richie, are you still on the call? Awesome.
Go ahead. Um, so that you would have to request from the insurer. Uh, if you are working with the whichever insurer you're working with, uh agent or broker, they should have access to those maps. Um, yes, those are available.
Thank you.
And I think this has been addressed, but it wouldn't be, um, it would be pretty good to uh uh assure people, uh is it correct that it's still option for insurance companies to give discounts for hardening and mitigations?
So insurers are now required to look into home hardening and mitigation efforts. So with the regulations that Commissioner Lara has passed, they are required. So all insurers, when they submitted their new rates this year, they have to consider those factors and incorporate it into their pricing.
Thank you. Alright, Allison, we're gonna move on. Anything with respect to um real estate or firewise?
Okay, real estate. How do you anticipate application of that new building code in high and moderate risk areas will impact uh will impact building costs? will impact, will impact building costs?
All right. Sorry, I'm still thinking about Bermuda saying, plus it's getting late. But, um, I mean, the, the, the cost of building, it, it went up a lot during, during COVID with the cost of supplies, you know, building materials. I think the price of redwood like tripled. And I mean, I, I expect, you know, let's just be honest, we don't, we don't have enough supply to meet all the demand. So and it's also that there's a lot of hurdles to rebuild out here. I know some people in the audience have gone through that process or are going through that process of rebuilding. My, my father actually lost his home in, in Brookdale. It burned down. And he opted not to rebuild like a lot of people have. So there are a lot of hurdles to, to rebuilding and I expect, you know, the, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see it getting any easier to build. I know foreleaf planning was helping out in, in the county building, but I think that their contract is ending soon, I want to say, foreleaf planning. I'm getting a no on that, so they're, they're sticking around. So that's, so. Okay, good. It was extended. Good. So that's my answer. Hope that helps.
Chief Wood has.
So first, the, the remap effort that's underway right now is for state responsibility area. And the Chapter 7A requirements apply only to new construction. So your existing house, nothing, if you do a significant remodel, then that it's captured when you pull permits, tip costs. So whatever your square foot cost is, you can add a handful of percentage points to that as, as a difference. And it's including things like dual pane windows, one with a tempered pane, you know, maybe something like hardy panel or, or some other treated. You're already required to have a Class A roof within the county and probably most of the cities. So there's, there's, in some instances, like the roof requirement, there's no extra cost because it's already part of that. Now, the difference that may occur with those same costs in mind are going to be when we do our remap in local responsibility area, LRA. So again, you're talking incorporated cities, valley floors, agricultural areas. And for those areas, those red areas have always had that construction requirement, that Chapter 7A requirement. So no additional costs there. You will probably see a higher requirement in newly created zones on that map that don't exist yet for those yellow and potentially, or orange, high and yellow, moderate in those areas. To stay abreast of that, if you go to the Fire Marshal's Office webpage and scroll all the way down to the bottom, you'll see a subscribe button. And if you subscribe to F H S C information, you'll see what happens as this process concludes. And there will be a very robust process as we roll this out to the hundreds of cities and back out to the county areas in LRA. So if you're concerned about it, if you want to make sure your comments are heard on it, that's where you'll find that information. Short answer is just a couple percentage points.
All right, Allison, what do you got?
Okay, I got two more questions if we have time. Otherwise I can skip one of them.
Does that include the one that you wanted to give to Gail?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's bring, let's bring a question to Gail. Would I make this worse if I, if I, if I turn the camera to you? Make everything that complete? There we go. Yeah, I'll have to microphone.
All right, the question is, what can local residents do to advocate for more funds allocated to Cal Fire and for more resources and personnel?
So we've actually formed a Central Coast Caucus in the state legislature that's made up of the senators and assembly members for this area. And that's exactly the kinds of things that we're doing is to bring resources, attention to the Central Coast region. And so we're working with the folks that are authoring bonds that are going to be going on the November ballot. There's going to be one that's on, on climate and we're trying to get carve-outs for the Central Coast region. And certainly the budget's already been done for this year, but I think this caucus will continue to be working in this area to make sure that this region gets the resources it deserves.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, Allison, who's our last question for?
The last question is can the presentations be made available from Cal Fire and the insurance? I'm assuming that means the, the PowerPoint presentations or something to that equivalent.
We can, if, if there's a link from the web, respective websites, then we are certainly happy to post those links.
So there is nothing proprietary about our PowerPoint. I, we got it to you guys through your, your system. So you can email it out or have them go to the, the file download site where we did our thing and share it to whoever you need to share with.
That's great. We would love to share that.
Were they asking for the insurance PowerPoint as well?
Yeah, that's available as well. Tammy does have that available. So more than welcome to share that as well, Tammy.
Thanks so much. Yeah, we'd be happy to share those out of our Sliven website.
Somebody mentioned that comments that they did not see the subscribe button.
Okay, so there's a comment someone made about the subscribe button.
Oh, she's never mind.
Oh, yeah.
Because I was going to get a detail down.
All right, was there any, were there any questions from, related to FireWise? Allison, no. Okay. Well, thank you everyone very much for coming. I'd like you to give a big round of applause to our speakers. Also, in particular, Gail Pellerin, thank you for taking your question. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate everyone. And so we will close out the Zoom and we'll be working on our recording of this meeting to, to present it to those who have missed it. Thank you again very much.